Can I ask a question? Glad to be recognized. I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Yes, Alderman Longton.
Thank you. Looking into the future, five, 10 years ahead, what happens to this program if Thorndale becomes part of the highway going into the airport?
I think the manager might want to kind of add on my initial comment. Keep in mind, we only have a two-year contract with ACS, and we've set up some parameters for our program and what we want to accomplish.
Since it is only a two-year contract, and they've only, they just allocated $140 million to do the study. If, in fact, the, as we go through the contract and we find that it's not working, or it is and we want to continue, we continue year to year, until at which time that intersection no longer exists. But the point is, is that, again, Wooddale, as we were with the Automatic Railroad Enforcement System, we were the first in the state, and the first in the county, we are going to be the first in the county to put the red light enforcement up. And the county's just basically kind of running slow on this. And I think what they want to do is they want to have some control or extract a fee from Wooddale for doing this. So, we just wanted to let you know, we would have had it up and running and ready to go at this point. It's the county that's holding us up.
Alderman Wesley.
I have one question. You said it's a two-year contract, which we signed the contract already with this company. Am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, my question now, since the county is delaying this, and we don't know if it's going to go through in October or that, does it, does a two-year contract go in effect when the camera's up and running? Or is our two-year contract already started, we already lost four months?
It should be when it's up and running, because they have, by the contract, to be able to have that facility up and running within, I believe it's 90 days. So, until the intersection's been accepted by us as operational and dedicated and fully functional, it's a moot point. I don't, you know, we can't let this go on forever. It wouldn't be good business for the company. It wouldn't be good business for us. Once again, we're hoping that the county will adopt the SOPs. IDOT's already done all the work. We're just merely asking county to let us attach our equipment to their apparatus. And it seems to be a fairly easy operation. So, once again, we're still optimistic that we're going to have this up and running by the end of the year. ACS is already still talking, or already talking with the engineering department of the Highway Department for DuPage, so that we can start getting a lot of the background work done.
Do you have any idea when county may make the decision? Is it October they look at?
Their committee meetings, meeting in October. And if this can get through the committee, it'll be right to the county board by November.
And would you be attending that meeting, just in case there's some questions?
Most definitely.
Thank you.
I have one thing to say. I read an article about City of Chicago. They said the reason they're putting them in the City of Chicago is to make revenue to help pay for the police department. That's what they said, because they're putting them up all over in the City of Chicago.
Are you asking me to comment about that, Alderman?
No, I just, I just, I read that in a paper, that they were, the reason the City of Chicago is putting them up is to help the revenue for the police department.
I can't speak for the City of Chicago, but I can certainly speak for the Wooddale Police Department in the City of Wooddale. And when you look at the cost that we're going to incur, not only the hard costs, but the soft costs, this is by no means going to be-
I realize that. I realize, I'm not saying Wooddale, I'm just saying the city.
Operationally, we're hoping that within the first year, after the first year of operation, we can cut down our violation rate by 50%. And we're hoping that by the end of the second year, that we can eliminate any accidents that are involving a red light violation. We're looking at education. We're looking at expanding our presence by responsibility, by changing behavior of people that not only go through that intersection, but also will think twice that the red light is not an asking for concurrence, but it's a mandatory stop.
Thank you for your information, Chief. All right, next item. Any questions? Next item, information item. Wooddale Police Department response to reports of bats in the Wooddale homes?
This was brought up with regards to what our response would be with regards to bats that are located within homes in Wooddale. Keep in mind that we have been seeing reports in newspapers recently with regards to rabid bats in different counties such as Will, in the southern end of DuPage County, and also in Cook County. We have taken a look at what our response would be. We have also talked, spoken with the DuPage County Animal Control Board. And with regards to bats in the home, that would be considered a threat to a living environment. And we would be obligated to try to capture any of those animals that are inside a house and then turn those over to the DuPage County Health Department for further testing for rabies. Because of the fact that it would be, the bat would be located within a living quarter of a home, that would be considered a threat and an exposure which would put the people at risk. So, because of that, we would have to take an active stance with regards to the person, that family's safety, also making sure that they can make the best decision which is available with regards to further treatment. With regards to bats located on the outside of homes, inside of attics, or inside of walls, we would have to defer to an animal relocator. And that animal relocator, because that does not pose a specific threat to inside the living quarters of a home, would then have to relocate those animals at the owner's expense themselves. So, once again, to help clarify the position of the Wooddale Police Department, it would be the expectations for our citizens to, it would be realistic for them to expect that we would help to assist to capture the bat while it's inside their home, identify that as either a rabbit or non-rabbit bat, and then have them contemplate further treatment. The majority of bats that are, you know, out there have a very good possibility of containing rabies. There's been two cases of bats that have been in living quarters in DuPage County in the last year, so it is possible. And the department, Animal Control, would like us to see consistency with regards to what I have just spoken about. So, once again, if anybody does incur that situation in their home, we will be obligated to go out there and apprehend, or capture the bat. We will then send it in for further testing. And if it's on the outside of their home, inside their rafters, attic, or inside their walls, they'd have to be able to, they'd have to contract with an independent service.
Alderman Sharky.
Real quick, I won't take a lot of time, but in the past, it's, a lot of people were getting bat houses because of the mosquitoes, that bats are supposed to eat more mosquitoes than any other animal. You said that many of the bats were rabid. Is this, do you know what the percent is, or?
No, I don't know that percent. And once again, I'm going on my conversation with Animal Control. But keep in mind that, yes, bats do have a place in the ecosystem. And they do, they do control a lot of the other insects that you mentioned. But once again, when you have bats cohabitating with humans, that's where the problem starts to exist. And what we want to do is make sure that if anybody, either through a bite or non-bite exposure, has that, that event happen in their home, that we do everything we can so that they can make the next logical decision on what they should do proceeding with medical treatment.
Can I follow very quickly?
Yes, go ahead.
To Gary, they didn't do the spraying Monday because of the rains, Clark, I'm talking about. And then they said that because it cooled off, it wasn't really necessary. Do you have any idea what the weather has to be before they spray again? Because mosquitoes are still a big problem.
Generally, the guidelines are that when the overnight lows do get down into the 50s, that they're recommending against spraying. Next week, I understand that the overnight lows are going to be back up again in the 60s and mid 60s. So, next week, they're saying that they may, you know, may be back within the threshold of spraying again. This wasn't a Wooddale-only issue, this was all over. Clark was recommending not spraying in any of their communities, so.
If you can notify us by email or something, so that when citizens ask, we can at least tell them when they, when you do find out they're going to spray. Appreciate it, thank you.
Does anybody else got any questions? All right, thank you, Chief, for giving us a talk about the bats. We have one flying around our house. But there's enough of woods that he goes in the woods. We know that, because he comes out of the woods at night. And so, he don't bother nobody, he just flies over. Okay, items to consider for future meetings. School District 7 report on choice programs in October. Repeal of Section 152012. Residents parking permit number 1, September 27. Location of noise monitors by ONCC. Does anybody got anything else they want to add to this? I adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm calling to order the Public Works Committee meeting of September 13, 2007. Let the record reflect that the same members are present. And next item is approval of minutes dated August 23, 2007. I make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is reporting recommendation, special service area number 12, which is pay request number three. And our records from Mr. Holm indicate that the work completed for that segment is accepted by our engineer. And, let's see, and all work listed is complete. So, I'm going to make a motion to, to make the payment be made to Arrow Road Construction Company in the amount of $824,148.19. Is there a second?
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Question. Gary, is this the last payment to them? It says that you have a project, a retain a project of $187,521. Is that like the bond, in case something goes wrong?
No, this is still a partial payment for them. There are still some punch list items, some landscaping issues that need to be addressed, some driveways. So, we'll have more payments for them.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on our agenda, item number five, is the Tioga Trail annexations. It's a report and recommendation for the utility installation contract. Mr. Holm, I'll hand it over to you to take us through it.
And I can handle some of the technical aspects of it. If you have questions related to the annexation process, the system manager will answer those if needed. We were directed to solicit quotes for installation of utilities to service the subject properties as part of their annexation into the city. By doing this, we are expediting the annexation process. We've been working with the city attorney. The language is such in the agreements that the city will do this work and then will be reimbursed by the subject property owners. We did receive three price quotes, as you can see there. And we are recommending a contract to JAE Utilities in the amount of $11,700.
So, my only question is, this fee, that if we contract, it'll be $11,700. And I understand in the write-up that we're looking at, that the cost that we incur will be charged back to the residents that annex in, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that, that's in addition to any other tap-on fees and standard fees that those residents would pay?
That is correct.
Okay. I have no other questions, thank you. Alderman Wesley.
I have one question. Gary, on the contract, where's this outfit out of?
I'm not sure what their city that they're out of. They do work regularly in Wooddale, but I don't know where their business is located. I can, I can find that out for you.
Okay, that's fine. But the other question I have with this is, how long is the time span that we will get this reimbursed? Because, is it like a special service area that it's going to be taxed on their tax bill? Is, are we looking at four years, three years? I mean, or are we going to get this automatically?
I may have to defer to Jeff on that one.
Because normally, if you annex in a property, it's always been put on a tax bill for so many years. I just want to know where we stand on this one, since it's such a small amount.
I believe they would have to be paid in full once they're hooked onto the water and sewer.
Really? Okay.
Any other questions? I make a motion to recommend that a contract be awarded to JAE Utilities Incorporated in the amount of $11,700 for installation of sanitary service stubs on Tioga Trail. Is there a second?
Second.
And the question, Alderman Sharky.
To what Jeff just said, is, do the residents there know that? They will know.
Throughout this whole process, this started back, if you can believe it or not, all the way in 2005. So, there has been quite a bit of correspondence back and forth between staff, the residents, and now it's been pretty much taken over by the city attorney. And I'm quite sure, I have some copies of the correspondence, that they all are up to date on all the information.
Thank you.
Alderman Coles.
Mr. Sharky, if you want to go down and see one of the houses that they built down there, on one of these lots, I think it's 355, you would be surprised, the beautiful house that's built on this. All right? So, they are, they are willing to come into the city.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. The question was called, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item, item number six, is an informational item. And it's on the Emerald Ash Borer Response Plan. While we haven't had an incident of the Emerald Ash Borer, it is in neighboring communities. So, this is a preventive approach in looking at how we're going to approach the situation. And if the Emerald Ash Borer did come through our community, it would be costly to mitigate, work through removal of the affected trees, et cetera. And with that, I'll ask Mr. Holm if he cares to add anything else to the informational item.
Yes, I would. The, in the first paragraph or first section there under background information, I think the most important thing that I want to stress that you haven't already stressed is that we're currently in the process of doing a tree inventory. And that should be coming forth in the next couple of months. That'll give us an idea of where we stand. We all have a guess right now as to what the makeup might be, how many ash trees we might have. But until we have those hard numbers, well, it's just that, it's still just a guess. I'm going to venture to say right now that I'll be coming before you at budget time with a request that will be significantly higher than it has been in past years for forestry services, because we are probably going to have to, we probably will have to start managing our ash trees, you know, to head this off, or at least to mitigate the EAB as best we can. Fact is that it's in surrounding communities. The fact is that it's probably here, we just haven't discovered it yet. So, it's just a matter of time that it will, will come into and be discovered in our city. And we want to be proactive rather than reactive. Really, these are just preliminary recommendations at this time. Until we have an idea as to how many ash trees we actually have and how big the magnitude of the problem is, that will enable us to finalize these recommendations. But for now, this is just preliminary and for your information is all.
Thank you. Alderman Coles.
I have a mountain ash in my yard. And there are some chemicals that you can buy at Menards. You have to measure the diameter of the tree, and you plant, you put it in the base of the tree. And that has to be done every fall. And it goes into the roots, and it goes back up the tree and feeds the tree. You can buy it at Menards. I don't know the name of it, because my wife takes care of that stuff. I don't take care of any of that. But she, she, she read up on it, and she got this stuff from Menards. And you're going to pour it around, you're going to measure the size of the tree. If it's 32-inch diameter or 40-inch diameter, it tells you on a can how much to use. And she bought a gallon of it. She used a whole gallon the first time, and she used another gallon this year. She just got done doing it again. And that's on a mountain ash tree. And that's supposed to eliminate the borers. So, we haven't seen any, so. But you can buy it at Menards. It's a chemical, so. And it tells you right on the chemical, it's for ash borers. So, there's a little information for somebody in case somebody wants it.
Thank you. Mr. Holm?
And that's a preventative measure that certainly won't hurt. I'll tell you, the Forest Service, right now, is skeptical of that. The Arboretum is skeptical of that. It's not going to hurt anything. And if you, as a homeowner, want to put it on your tree, it's certainly not going to hurt anything, and it could only help.
Well, you have no guarantee.
They're not recommending that as a, as a course of action, though, because there's no real, not enough documentation to say that that really will be sufficient.
Well.
You know, like Will Mett, I'll use Will Mett as the example, because they're one of the first communities in Illinois that discovered the Emerald Ash Borer. They have a signature or a trophy ash that's in excess of 100 years old, I think it was. They're trying that method with that tree to try and save that tree. Your other ash trees in town that are affected or soon will be affected, they're taking down. They're not even messing around.
Well, as I say, it's just some information.
Yeah, I agree. And like I said, I don't think it'll, can hurt. It certainly can't hurt at all.
Just some information out.
Alderman Wesley.
Gary, did you contact Elk Grove, is it in their town?
Did that happen this week while I was gone?
It was last meeting I brought it up. That's why I said I needed fast track on this, because it was in Elk Grove.
Glendale had it, I know. I haven't heard, I get email updates on EAB all the time.
Okay, my question here, too, I agree that we are moving forward in this. But when I went to the, when I went out to get the award for the city for Tree City, they had a conference, they had actually a guy come out and talk about this.
That's the guy from Will Mett.
Right, I mean, quite heavily. And my question here, meanwhile, Gary, I see the way we're doing. Do you think we should start planning an area for the tree areas? If it gets down to, or wait down the line? And also, if I am mistaken, there's also, we could do the background check and see if there's funding available if we do get invaded, because they did say at that conference there is state funding to, to help remove these trees, because Will Mett did get some state funding, I don't know how much, you might want to call him. Could we look into that? And, because I really want to stay ahead of this ballgame, because obviously Will Mett, I mean, you're right, they tear down everything. Matter of fact, a couple of weeks ago, where was it? They got hit with the tornado or got destroyed over there. They having a problem now with all their trees that fell down, that they can't remove them out of the entire town, because it's quarantined. It's a good program to start, but if you could look into those, state funding, if there would be available, if it got down to it. And the other, what was the one? You know, the state funding, and if we could ballpark figure a designated area where we could dump this if it does happen. Because it does happen quick, they do go rapidly. So, I mean, I'd really like to stay ahead of the ballgame on this one.
Alderman Wesley, clarification on the state funding. State funding for what? For removal if we need it, or prevention, or facilitating the program?
Believe it's, it's to help to remove it, because a lot of towns don't have, if you have to remove thousands and thousands of ash trees, I don't know how many we got either. There was money available to help fund the removal of those trees, because a city or a town does not have that kind of pocketbook to get rid of it like that. And there was state funding available that the guy did say at the meeting. And you could follow up with that with, who went to the meeting with me? Rusty went to the meeting, too. So, I mean, if we could look at that option, too, and have everything pretty much in a tight space now for when he does come to the budget next year, or whatever he's going to do, we have some options that we can fall back on, that we don't have to fund the whole project if there is even money available.
Sure, and then, Mr. Holm, when you were mentioning a potential budget increase, can you go into a little more detail on what that would entail, for reason why?
Well, our guess right now is that we may literally have entire streets, if not large portions of neighborhoods, that have ash for their street trees. You may, there may be no diversity within certain areas of town. We may want to begin to introduce diversity in those areas of town. So that, like when the Dutch Elm disease hit, you literally lost your whole canopy, you know, down the whole, the whole street. If we could get in front of it, we could maybe have some other trees planted that could be, you know, five years, 10 years old by the time we saw the worst of the ash borer, and maybe, you know.
Right.
This is all guessing at this point, until we have our inventory done.
Okay.
But we're trying to stay out in front of it with certain programs.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Sharky.
I'd like to just commend your, your group, the Public Works, because they did go around after the storm, and I think they picked up most of the branches and trees were down. My only question is, what, do, I'm sure our people do recognize ash trees, so they don't chip it with everything else. And what do we do with, when we, when they do have branches with ash, you know, from ash trees?
That will be an issue right now, because we don't have a finding in our town, that's not an issue. We can, we can just chip ash with all the other wood at this point in time.
We're still doing that.
Once we become a hot zone, as referenced in here, once we become a hot zone, those rules kind of change. And that you can't, you have to handle the ash debris separate. You're going to have to chip it up to a certain size. But we're not there yet. So, right now, we're still operating as we normally would.
I'm sure they're looking over the ash tree branches, though, that they've been picking up, hopefully.
Yeah, our guys have been trained, they've been sent to classes this year to identify what it looks like.
Okay, any other questions? Item for information only, or Alderman Police, no question? Okay. Item for information only, next item is items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, engineering review and design procedures. Item B, ordinance revisions, private improvements with public ROW. C, parkway tree ordinance. Item D, storm sewers detention ordinance revision. Item E, school street pond project. Item F, annexations, phase two. Item G, MFT audit results. And then, there was another item to look at. The people in the Dominion High Rise, they had asked, contacted me about the lighting in the building from ComEd in residential rates versus commercial rates. And I believe we were going to contact our contact at ComEd to get his take on if we can, you know, explain to ComEd that it is not a commercial operation inside that high rise, it's all residential. But yet, they're getting charged commercial rates. They're explaining it's more expensive.
Commercial rate is cheaper.
Alderman Longton.
ComEd is January reclassified. The common area of condominium has a commercial property rating. So, I made a comment once before, when we were talking about this, that they got a double Miami, they got the rate increase, and they got a reclassification to commercial. All common area of a condominium is commercial now, as January occurs. That's why the rates are that ComEd's not going to change it unless there's legislature, the state.
Well, I would still like a response from our contact. Are you stating that? Right, right. And, and you're saying that it was mandated by the state that all?
All I know is it was part of the rate hike that we all got hit with so hard earlier.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Wesley.
Can I just ask, Jeff, maybe you can answer this. Face, annexation phase two, could you tell me what area that is?
It's about five or six properties, maybe two or three on Pine, and maybe two on an adjacent street. I don't have the exact addresses. It's a handful of properties.
Okay, because if it is Pine, there's also some property on there that wanted the annex.